Thank you. Tonight's Monday, October 13th. Athens City Council is meeting in committee. We have four committees tonight. As chairman of the Planning Development Committee, I will start proceedings for this evening. We basically have one item on our Planning Development Committee. It has been brought to the city that a... Some citizens would like to donate a piece of property up by Sal's Park. This is from the ransom estate and it's on ground. It's the last parcel on ground. And they would like to donate it to the city to become conservation and recreational land. This parcel, particular parcel, is difficult to develop and is adjacent to Sal's Park. So it would actually fall right in line with a lot of the information and points put forward by the Planning Commission and the Athens Comprehensive Plan to ensure, you know, protection of vulnerable parcels. So we all have, or at least I have, I think you guys all got it.
Yeah.
The deed and the map of which parcel it is. So we will bring that forward to accept that donation from the family. And we really appreciate this. This is one of several donations that have been given to the city by generous people, citizens and community members of our city. And we very much appreciate it.
Question?
Question.
Any structures on this property?
No.
Nothing?
Ransom. It's the ransom estate. The estate is in probate right now. And so transfer will occur at the end of probate, which who knows?
Yeah.
Through probate, but it should be relatively straightforward. Other questions? Okay.
No.
So I will bring this as for first reading, to accept this piece of donated property. And I really would like to say thank you to the ransom family for doing this. I have one miscellaneous. It's more of a announcement. I would like to remind people that the Environmental and Sustainability Commission is having a public meeting to get public input on the sustainability and climate plan that they are developing for the city of Athens. That's Wednesday, six o'clock in the community center. Everybody is more than happy to have all and everybody come to this important meeting. Any other miscellaneous?
I don't have any.
Okay. So that's the close of the Planning and Development Committee. City and Service Committee?
Thank you.
You're last.
To start off tonight, we've got a visitor here today who's going to talk about the smoke-free parks. Thaden Brent is here. And he wants to, again, talk about what he's seen and data he's collected from around our city parks when it comes to trying to make our city parks truly smoke-free. It's kind of timely because there's a kind of a collision of the perfect storm when it comes to some other smoke efforts going on throughout the city of Athens. Ohio University in 2015, 16, going smoke-free and some other efforts that are going on in the uptown area. So thank you for coming. Do you want to come up and take the podium?
So I have just a short presentation. I'll try and keep it 10 minutes. And it's actually, there's more slides. It's probably a 25-minute, but I'll make it 10. Just as a father and in going to a lot of the parks around town, playgrounds in particular, I have a nine-year-old daughter, spent a lot of hours at playgrounds and observed a lot of cigarette smoking. And it began as a question, you know, is there a law against this? Why is this happening? And so I've done a lot of research over the past 18 months regarding this issue. And I found out there's about 1,000 municipalities across the nation that already have smoke-free park laws. And many of you have probably seen the list, or at least you have it in your inbox. There's some towns in Ohio on there. There's towns from Alabama. There's towns from Texas. Every state is doing this. And of course, we've had a lot of this legislation go through for indoor smoking. And now it's really coming into the fore for the outdoor. So the first few slides are really some background that I'm just going to pass through quickly. This is pre-1964. I've created a timeline because really I'm trying to put this into context a little bit. I'm not going to spend too much time on these first few slides. But, you know, in the 1964, 1971 time period, we realized smoking wasn't healthy for us. So we began to change our legislation. And in the 30 years after 1971 or so, I think you're all familiar with the tobacco companies became very restricted. And in the past 15 years, smoking itself has become very restricted. So we're at that point. It's a very contemporary issue now to start looking at outdoor areas due to secondhand smoke and just public behavior in general. The last bullet here I'll point you to is about the Arts Parks and Recreation Department publishing a master plan with absolutely no verbiage at all about tobacco. And you're probably familiar with their mission statement, which includes providing activities in areas for healthy fitness activities and culture activities. And the picture you see at the bottom is part of what they've recently done is place these stickers on the playground equipment in not all the parks, not all the playgrounds, but some of them. I think this is from the Community Center Playground. And I think they've had a policy of no smoking in place for quite some time. But the heart of this talk is really about what I've done this past summer. I spent 32-day period collecting cigarette butts just to get an idea for the people who don't go to playgrounds and parks, to get an estimate of how much smoking is going on. So I did this at South Side Park, Community Center and Highland Avenue. And I focused on South Side Park because it seemed to be more representative. It's a higher-traffic park, at least for playground activities. And a lot of the cigarette butts I collected, obviously, were concentrated around benches and picnic shelters. And I did like a five-to-10-day frequency of going back and collecting cigarette butts. And I estimated that at South Side Park during the summer hours, between 10 and 16 cigarettes were smoked at that park during that time. And I'm going to show you the data that I collected. I even have the cigarette butts with me if you want to see them, just to be graphic about it. What I did was I initially cleaned up the park by collecting every cigarette butt I could find, just to create a blank slate, so that the next pickup that I came through would be the new cigarettes. And you can see each time I collected, you know, 44, 47, 75. And I divided by the number of days that had passed to get the average per day of cigarette butts that were on the ground. And I did initial cleanups at Highland Park and the Community Center also, but I didn't do periodic ones. And it gives you a relative idea of what the traffic is. At South Side Park, my initial cleanup was 155 cigarette butts. And Highland Park was 30, and Community Center was 59, to give you an order of magnitude sort of where these parks are in terms of cigarette use. And then I went ahead and I estimated, based on, you know, what the discard rate might be. The smokers would discard their cigarette butts maybe the majority of the time. Then I highlighted those areas. For example, at the bottom, if every cigarette user disposed their cigarette on the ground and I collected them, then the average would be 9.3 cigarettes per day that were actually smoked. But if it was less than that, if 50% put it in an ashtray and I didn't collect it, then the... So I think it's somewhere, and Steve, you might have an idea, since you're involved with the issue of people disposing cigarettes on the streets. I think it's a majority of cigarette users actually just throw it on the ground. So that's why I highlighted those areas. I think it's between 10 and 16 cigarettes for South Side Park during the summer hours, which is about one cigarette per hour of daytime use that you're going to see somebody smoking a cigarette. And in fact, just my own observations, I've seen that. And I'm sure you'd find somewhat similar results with other parks, but this is the So why should we... I mean, I really believe the city should have an ordinance which basically restricts smoking in the parks. It is a contemporary thing that people are doing all across the country. It's happening now. This is the time to do it. In a few years, I believe Athens will be behind. If we don't do something like that, we'll be sort of behind the curve. I think it's a good time to do it. There's actually a study... I have a hard copy and I have an electronic copy of all my bibliography at the end. But there's been a study that actually measures outdoor cigarette smoke because there's a debate about how dangerous is it really to have... Be exposed to cigarette smoke outdoors. So they've tried to measure that. And the U.S. Surgeon General was saying that there's no level of exposure to secondhand smoke that's without some type of a risk. And I think children are probably more susceptible to cigarette smoke than adults. Behavior by association. Children are going to associate a good day at the park with maybe observing adults smoking cigarettes. And I think that's a good reason to ban cigarette smoke, cigarette use in the playgrounds. I've talked to a lot of parents who have observed their toddlers trying to eat cigarette butts, or at least play with them. And this goes to cigarette butts as litter, as toxic litter. It's... There's been studies done about that, and it's very toxic. So, you know, just from a liability standpoint, I think we should get... Try and maximize our efforts towards eliminating smoking in the playgrounds. And this is referring to the municipality list. I think it's up to almost 1,000 municipalities across the nation have similar ordinances in place, from one degree or another, full restrictions or some kind of designated areas or proximity guidelines for smokers. So this is just my bibliography. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Why just... Why keep it at smoke-free? Why not just tobacco-free?
Could be tobacco-free.
I mean, if we're going to move in that direction, why not just go the whole way? I mean, already the medical centers around here are all tobacco-free campuses, those big lines up there. I'm not saying no smoking. They're saying no tobacco. You don't bring it onto our property. No snuff, no scold, no chew, no nothing.
No electronic cigarettes?
Yes.
Yeah. I agree. I totally agree. Yes. Yeah, so terminology should probably be tobacco-free. And that would line up with what OU is trying to do with their...
Exactly.
I mean, what's going to happen when the students can't smoke over there? They're going to come over here.
Exactly. Exactly.
In the future, maybe the whole city of Athens will be outdoor tobacco-free. Because that's why my title said Part One for the child-designated areas.
Can you send that report to all of us, or at least send it to Debbie Walker?
The presentation?
Yeah.
I can leave two flash drives which have copies of them.
Okay.
Tonight, I can leave them here.
All right.
Okay. And I can send them to whoever wants them.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I commend you on the data collection. It was interesting. I think I've shared this before, but during this year's beautification day, kind of the last moment, I gave a bunch of groups plastic bags and asked them specifically to pick up cigarette butts and just put them in there. And within a two-hour period of time, we ended up collecting 4,982 cigarette butts. A large part of them came from South Side Park. Again, same thing, that's when I was heading out. Your data falls right in line with what I saw. I think this is an important project.
Yeah.
You know, something worth looking into.
I was surprised by the number of parents that would come up to me while I was collecting, saying, "Thank you for picking those up." And I said, "Well, I'm actually doing a study." So, yeah, they're concerned.
This also fits with living healthy Appalachia, which Jennifer can speak to more specifically. But, you know, with this community's efforts to try to, in all areas, to improve. And I think your statement about having young children around people who are actively smoking. I mean, what you do in your own home is one thing, but out in the public, where there's a lot of other people, and there's a statement to be made there, too.
Yeah.
In a public city park.
Yeah.
Not a private park, but a public city park.
Now's the time. 10, 15 years ago, it was different.
Thanks. Thank you, Thaden, for your presentation.
Thanks.
I know from previous conversations, and as you mentioned, you've been working on this for, what did we say, 18 months, correct? That's a lot of data collection and a lot of observation, efforts directing this and thinking about it. I know in our previous conversation, one of the challenges we talked about is enforcement. But I think with the idea or knowledge that our hospital campuses, university campuses are all moving towards this direction, it would make sense in my mind as well, when we consider wellness, the healthy initiatives. It makes sense for us to consider moving in that direction as well, too. So I'm definitely optimistic about making changes and embracing this idea. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for coming tonight. And as I'm understanding it, you've talked about some of our signage that's here right now may not be real obvious, may actually be missing from some of the parks. So you're talking about signage, and you had mentioned in education, we could be working with the Health Department as well on this. And possibly then, I'm imagining, I don't know what kind of ordinance, but would move forward to make this a more comprehensive measure, but I think that's what we're needing to do.
I have a model ordinance also, a hard copy with me, and I can send it electronic from one of the organizations. Municipalities.
In Ohio? Is it an Ohio municipality?
I think it's a national organization, so it's kind of a generic thing that they put out there on the website. But, yeah. Yeah, and I have some ideas, too, about it. You know, if that ever goes through, the first year is critical and new and difficult to adjust in terms of enforcement and implementation. But, you know, there's other ways to do it. Neighborhood watch groups, if you're familiar with those, they can be instituted in parks during the first year and remind people that the city has passed an ordinance, for example. Lot of different ways. And then eventually, people get used to it and they accept it, at least most people.
You know, I want to echo what Member Reznor was saying is that, and I know that there is at least one city in Ohio. There's three cities total. I looked at your list and it was impressive to look at from other states.
Yeah.
I look at the... You look at your tobacco-producing states, South Carolina, North Carolina, Maryland, Tennessee, Kentucky, and I think those average 30 cities, but in the state of Ohio, there's three. But of those three, one of them, I know, does have the disclaimer where it's all tobacco-free and has just recently moved to electronic cigarettes, e-cigarettes. They're banning those in the city parks as well. So I agree with you. I think this is timely. I think it's time that we become city number four, maybe.
Absolutely.
Hit three.
Thaden, I really appreciate your work in bringing factual data and research forward. That really helps us as we look at making changes. And you're absolutely right that our city's Parks and Recreation Department should be about promoting healthy choices, whether it's in the food choices that we make, the fitness choices that we make, or the substances that we choose to put in our body and the modeling that takes place in those situations. It's hard for me to believe that when I was a child, my family grew tobacco, and I played with tobacco hornworms in the fields. My family would never dream of doing such a thing today. So the historical context that you provided is really valuable because we can make informed decisions when we learn new information. We can make the choice to make... To be healthier, and that's really important, that we not shy away from action because it's scary to make change and change is difficult. Change is important. And, you know, we can't be healthy without making some informed decisions sometimes. So I appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you. You're welcome. And I can come back again and actually go slower next time.
Yeah.
Just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see.
The next item that we have on our agenda is the People Lift Station. And it's listed as Depot of the Station Design. Basically, City Engineer Andy Stone wants to start collecting some hard data on the lift station itself to go along with the station design services as that starts to move forward. So an appropriation of $10,000 to collect that down. So that'll be coming up Monday night. Also, dealing with engineering, is the North Congress sanitary sewer design. That's another critical element. It's an old, old sewer line and also storm drain line that runs down through that valley that's down by North Congress, in between North Congress and Pine and Ring in that little neighborhood, in between, I think, Mound, Mound and North Congress. A very difficult place to get into when there has been breaks, when there's been work to be done, if they have to go in and jet out those lines. Again, it's very hard to do, to get in there. So hopefully, as this is moving forward, it'll also kind of be some restructuring of that right of way through there and cleaning things out a little bit through there. But that's something else that'll be moving forward. Service Safety Director, do we have?
You're correct in all of that. Andy's still compiling the information. He's already worked with a design engineer that's working here locally on campus and actually did the camera. Remember when the cameras looked on? So we hope to have that by next Monday. He's... He believes he's seeking less than $50,000, and it would be a transfer from Sewer Bet to Sewer Op.
I think it's important for folks to know that the camera has actually viewed from the North Congress side down Ring, down Palm, you know, down all the way through there, all the way down. And so they have a pretty good understanding of what's working and what isn't. And of course, we're talking about a storm. We have a storm drainage plan now, a water drainage plan, and the issue is sanitary going into storm drainage. And so that's why it's so important that this sewer improvement occur. Because I know that's something the EPA is really looking closely at as well.
The Creeper Camera identified a number of crossconnections throughout that water line that will be worked on, part of the plan.
I forget when that tunnel was built. I want to say 1910, '12?
I have the '30s down for Tunnel Congress and Mound.
It's quite old.
And 1950s maybe was when they did an upgrade.
It's old.
Yeah, it's old.
Speaking of Wolf, going on to the next item on our list, is the Water Treatment Plant. And for those of you who don't know, there's two plants down there. The first plant was built in 1957. The second plant was built in 1967. That said, I know I've spoken to Sean Beasley down there, who's the director of the Water Treatment Plant on numerous occasions, and I have to really give him props for the way he's keeping things together. But anyway, certainly need to start looking at a feasibility study to accompany the Water Treatment Plant. Time is right to be doing that. There's a number of things that have been pointed out, observations on deficiencies of the plant, things such as pumps and motors, power feed into it. All these structures or elements are old, in some cases antiquated, like some of the control valves throughout the plant. We all took a tour through there during the street tour. So for the feasibility study, we're basically looking at between $35,000 and $50,000 for the feasibility study to get this going, to see where to take this next in bringing the Water Treatment Plant up to speed.
First step. And we're looking at, you know, life safety issues immediately, so it's time. Waste Water Treatment's getting all the love right now, but protect our water.
With the feasibility study, you'd be doing a comprehensive study, though, overall, is that...
Focusing on life safety and, you know, critical operations. We're not getting a new plant, but we will definitely get an upgraded.
Well, we don't necessarily need a new plant, physical plant is what you're talking about. It's just the inert, the working parts.
Yeah. You know, the big difference between the Water Treatment Plant and the Waste Water Treatment Plant is the physical environment. It's a lot more caustic down at the Waste Water Treatment Plant than it is if the Water Treatment Plant is bringing in otherwise clean water, processing it, making it cleaner, and therefore, there's not as much in terms of breakdown and deterioration as there is at the Water Treatment, Waste Water Treatment Plant. And I have no miscellaneous tonight.
Announcement? You have an announcement?
I do have an announcement. Thank you. And this is a near and dear one to my heart, and I think a lot of people. On October 18th is the Walk the Walk for Mental Health Awareness. They'll be meeting up at 10:00 in front of the county courthouse again, which is usually where they have the kickoff ceremony, a couple of people presenting and speaking, and then make the walk down through the city and up to either the ridges, or you can take the shortcut and walk down the bike path to Appalachian Behavioral Health, which is where it ends. And there's, if I remember correctly, there is refreshments at the end of the Walk though. This is a good deal. This is something that everyone should go out and take part in.
That Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday, 10:00 in front of the courthouse.
On to Finance and Personnel Committee. We'll be looking at three items tonight, the budget, workers' comp, and then some appropriations and transfers that we have. And council members last week received a copy of a timeline that the city has used for a number of years, looking at different budget items to be discussed, and then an approximate timeline for us moving forward on the discussion of the details of that, so we can pass, we can have three readings of the budget as it's designed. So what we'll be doing in the next few weeks is looking at details and information presented to us from both the Auditor's Office, as they look at revenue projections for us towards the end of the year. We'll be looking then at, as the mayor and his administration design the budget items, looking through each of the departments and their wish lists, their major project lists, and looking at all of that. Some of the first things we'll be looking at with Auditor Heck next week will be those preliminary revenue projections. And we've got to remember, we're only, you know, just entering the final quarter of the year, so she can... You can make estimates for us, but there's always a little bit of a fine line. Does something come in unexpected, or is there an emergency that might take more resources towards the end of the year? One of the things that the auditor has prepared for us tonight, as we look at revenues and then also paying out different expenses, are the debt schedule. And I believe that each of you received a copy of that. And it's a summary sheet that's helpful. It's a little bit difficult to work through the details on sometimes. The main things that we need to be aware of in the coming months are that we have, well, big picture first, that we have, you know, several million dollars' worth of debt that the city has. that we have, you know, several million dollars worth of debt that the city has, that we have certain limits placed on us by a higher revised code, that we could only, I think, do 10 and 1/2, have debt up to 10 and 1/2 percent of our assessed assets in the city. So I think we could go to approximately $37 million in debt grand total. But you have to balance that out with the fact that we also need to make sure we have the cash, that we have the revenue resources to pay off those debts. So as we look at this debt schedule sheet, the main thing to keep in mind is that we will have three payments coming up in the next few months. Two of them will be in December. The first one will be, excuse me, four, actually, approaching between now and the end of the year. We'll have the community center, the interest and principal payment coming due on that. And we have a principal of approximately $905,000. And we'll have payment of part of that off, what, we'll be making a recommendation, it could be approximately $485,000 that we would be paying off towards that, plus the interest. The second item that we'll have coming due, loan payment, will be for our fire department ladder truck. And we have still outstanding on that $225,000. And if you'll remember, we have, due to the generosity of the university, a $50,000 a year payment that we received from them. Last year, when we made it the ladder truck payment, we paid $75,000, 50 of which was from the university, 25,000 of which was from city revenues. So we will be making a recommendation, might very well be similar to that again this year, for that loan payment. Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements, payment due on December 12th, $750,000 is the outstanding balance on that. If you look to the second half of that debt schedule, the lower half of it, if you go down OWDA, Ohio Water Development Authority, I think is the correct full term for it, and we have some improvements that we are, that were made a number of years ago, but we have this final payment coming on January 1, 2015. Of this amount owed, I believe it was approximately, what, $160,000 that's owed grand total on this, of which we paid about $80,000 in July. We will have another $80,000 that we will be needing to allocate to pay on that. And we do need to make arrangements for that loan payment in December because, as I understand, this will automatically happen on January 1. So we have to have moved the money along so we can pay for that. So that's what we have coming up in terms of our debt, debt schedule approaching.
If you don't mind, we should probably, council, make a decision on how much they want to pay down on these two loans that are due December 12th, because they will be starting through the end of October, and then by the end of November, if you want them to go through three readings.
So that would be?
So that we can have that all in place in the paperwork to pay those off.
The wastewater treatment, so that's in the top of that debt schedule?
Right. Those are local loans here at Hocking Valley. It's an annual note.
Okay. 0.35 percent, which is awesome.
Yeah, it is.
We were looking at the rates of some of the other loans that weren't so awesome many years ago.
No, and we can't, yeah, change some of those.
And we can't accelerate the payoff of those? Are those those type of loans?
Yes, we can. Those we can pay off. Those we have taken out for one-year notes. They're not.
Because it would make sense to prioritize the loans with larger interest rates, because we're paying.
That's true. Well, and you just, you have to have the money available. The ladder truck is in the general fund. We really don't have $225,000 to pay that off.
But that's 0.35 percent. So I'm looking more at the 4.16 percent and 4.12, you know, 12 percent. You know, because we're paying more interest on those.
Talking about the water and sewer ones, no, those aren't set. They'll really pay off.
We can't renegotiate them or?
No, no, afraid not.
And the other thing we have to balance that with is there are these payments up here in December that we have to meet. So I'll have to go through those. So are you?
For the history, as you said, last year, we paid down $75,000 on the ladder truck, and we paid down $100,000 on the water treatment plant improvements. And so that, of course, comes out of the sewer debt fund. But it has to, yeah.
So do we have an idea of what we would like that payment to be for the ladder truck and the water treatment plant improvements?
I would say at a minimum, we would probably want to pay what we paid last year.
At a minimum.
That that would be reasonable without depleting, you know, the resources. That sounds reasonable with the auditor's office, do you think? And then the other ones that are due January 1?
That's a matter of having the money in the fund. They scoop, as Ray told us at our meeting this afternoon, the bank, those are automatic payments, where they scoop into the bank and take it out. And they do that like five after midnight. And so when it says January 1.
12:05. They're working on January 1st.
Actually, he said 12:04 is usually. So, yeah, so they come in, scoop that money out. So we have to make sure that that is in that fund, that we can account for it. It's actually a, you know, an appropriation for next year's budget. But however, then that leads us to the water fund. In the sewer fund, as you know, council has set up a certain amount of money from the fees, utility fees, that automatically goes into the sewer fund, which does have a higher amount of debt than the water fund. But the water fund doesn't have that. So council has to move money from the water fund into the water debt fund to make sure that the money is there to cover those debt payments. So.
And if I'm understanding some of the discussion that we had this afternoon, we would do that so that we can meet this payment of that, you know, of the money automatically being scooped and take the water from the money from the water fund to the water debt fund. But that what we might be considering for next year then is setting aside, like we do for our sewer fund, a set percentage so that the money's always flowing into the water debt fund, so that we have the money there and we're not having to make a transfer.
The tap is slowly turned.
Right, right. It can always be moved back to the water fund to be used for something else if you have extra money. But it's a good idea. And it wouldn't need to be the 25 percent that we have from sewer, sewer fees. But there's a couple other things that that brings to mind is the fact that the water fund has such a low unappropriated balance. The amount of money that we need in the debt fund for this payment at the end of the year is about $78,000. And there's only $40,000 unappropriated. So we will need to go in and make some adjustments to the appropriations. So I don't know if it would be okay if council would go ahead and pass the ordinance that they do at the end of the year, allowing the auditor to go in and reduce appropriations as necessary.
Which we had mentioned last week, that we knew that you would be needing to do that.
Right. Yes, thank you. So if you go ahead and start that through Monday, then that'll make it a little bit easier. There won't be so much action for council to do. There certainly is money in there in some of the account lines that could be reduced that would free up the appropriations.
And our water fund tends to go down because of water emergencies, water breaks, water projects. We do a lot with water.
Yes.
And replacement, that kind of thing.
Right.
And when those emergencies happen, it's like we don't have much of a choice.
No.
We have to repair those things so that the city has water.
And good job, right before homecoming, able to get that break on Schaefer Street fix to move all the traffic in and out. That was, the crews were up quite late doing and working on that.
So and hopefully, what will help is if the water fees increase, you know, covers that for next year. And that's up to the Service Safety Director to help with that.
We'll be looking for additional information on that in the future. Okay. On a more immediate note then, that we will continue the discussions of the budget each week at regular session with Auditor Heck next week, and then committee meetings after that. And the more immediate needs then for appropriations, in addition to the one that Auditor Heck mentioned about, you know, reducing appropriations in certain departments, we also need to appropriate $15,000 for the demolition of a house. And this was mentioned, I believe, two weeks ago, but we want to move forward with an appropriation for that. And then I need to confirm, I think the last one that we've talked about most recently is just a transfer, and this is monies for purchase in the law director's office of some computers. And the money is available in supplies in the 200s account, but the auditor would prefer that this comes out of the cap fund rather than supplies.
Right. That's, we have a computer equipment line in our cap fund. So it's no new money, no new appropriation, but because it's in the 200s, council has to approve and transfer to the 500s.
That makes sense. The last item that I have, although there may be a few others, has to do with the workers' comp monies that we pay to the state. And we, the city, along with a lot of other cities, all the other cities in Ohio probably, will be receiving some money because of a settlement with the workers' comp division, Bureau of Workers' Comp. And it was a settlement because of some overcharging that occurred. And the amount that the City of Athens will be receiving is about $215,000. And some of you have a graphic that's, I don't know if all of you received it or not, this graphic about workers' comp payments and when they're due. You might say, number one, is the big brush stroke kind of picture that historically, the City of Athens had paid a much higher rate, about 8 percent. But now we're down to 3.7 percent on our workers' comp rate. We do good safety practices, education and training seminars for our employees. So it's a real thanks to the city administration for moving that forward. When this money comes in, the reason we've provided this graphic for you is to give you kind of an overview of when payments are due. So we have a first payment due in 2015, and that will be due in May, and it will be a prospective payment. So what's happening, as I understand it, is previously, we had been charged retrospectively for, here's your past rate, pay the fee. And they will be switching over over the next year. So we'll be doing prospective payments. And at one point, I think during one year, we'll actually be having two payments. What the auditor's office is recommending is that when the $215,000 comes into the city, that we appropriate that $215,000 to the workers' compensation account. So that when we do have to make the double payment switching and not only paying retrospective, but prospective payments, we'll have the money there and it will be set aside. So we don't spend it for anything else. So we'll just apply it, set it aside in the workers' comp account, and apply it for future payments and future premiums.
That money is taken from each department in the city, and it's pro-rated, depending on the number of employees that they have. So when we got our last payment, which was over $200,000 also, we put it back into the funds that contribute to the workers' comp fund, depending on the percentage that they paid in. So this time, rather than putting it in there so that it can be used for other expenses, is to set this aside. We will actually get three workers' comp bills in one year, in 2016. And so we will be paying for 2015, and we will also be paying for 2016 by the end of the year. And then we will be billed for 2017 as they move to this, you know, pay in advance plan. So, and our payments now, as Member Nicely said, when we were penalty rated several years ago and paid a lot more. And so we had that for five years. The city's worked very hard, has done a lot to improve that. So we have a pretty low rate now. It's just barely over 3 percent.
When you say they, you're talking about Columbus?
No.
When you say they, where did the payments go? Because I think people probably don't understand.
Oh, yeah, the workers' comp bureau.
Up in Columbus, and then they write the check to send back to the city or to the municipality.
Well, they are now. I mean, usually, we pay them and that's it.
This is a one-time.
Yeah.
So when you talk about having to overlap payments and all that, the system, the accounting system is changing?
Yes. Yes. No, in the past, we actually had until September of the following year to pay. We always paid before May because you get a discount if you pay early. But now they're going to move that. We'll be paying proactively. And so I'm not sure how they're going to, well, I mean, we have to file reports and let them know how many employees we have and things like that. So any adjustments, I guess, that might occur over the year will happen. But we don't have that many dramatic changes in our number of employees to affect it very much. But, yeah, so we're going to start paying in advance instead of paying, having really nine months the next year to pay it off for the year before.
And our annual premiums are about, you've provided us with this information, approximately $165,000 a year that we pay for the city employees.
Will the discounts for the early paying then in this new process, will that go away?
No, but it's kind of a complicated process that they have set up to make it easy for people. And so the earlier you pay, you will get a discount. But because I'm sure it'll be a hardship for a lot of entities and possibly us, you know, they have payment plans that you can set up. But yes, then you don't get that early discount on that. So that will still be available, but I think we'll have to see about some funds. The problem with some funds, the ones that pay the most in two workers' comp, would be street fund, water and sewer fund, because of the number of employees they have. And the thing about those funds is their revenue trickles in all year. So they don't have that big chunk of money sitting there at the beginning of the year to go ahead and pay, to pay this in advance for the whole year. So we'll have to see how that works out. So we did that one year. We got in trouble with the street fund by trying to pay it in February. And it made the actual funds tight. So we had to reduce appropriations.
Any questions from other council members about items? And any other issues, Auditor Heck or Service Safety Director, mostly related to?
Are we going to transfer money in 580 for the code purchase, $7,000 from 580, 580 to 580, 351?
So that shouldn't require council action because it's going from practice.
Yeah.
I'll let you determine.
I'm not sure on that one, if you don't want to do that. I thought we were.
I'm sorry.
Either way, the bottom line is there's money in cap and code is going to need some computer equipment.
That's right, that's the computers.
Yeah, about $7,000. There is money available and they're already appropriated.
Thanks. Okay, transportation. We have several items that have been added under miscellaneous, so I'll just kind of move through those. There's always a lot going on with transportation, as we know. One thing I did want to mention, if people haven't already heard, is that the Historical Commission here in the state of Ohio awarded the Oxbow Bridge Project, and a historical award. And they had a, is it coming up?
Saturday.
It's Saturday in Columbus. And they will be awarding the design team, the construction team, and the city. And I assume someone from the city is attending?
I would be in attendance.
Okay, great. So that's just a little feather in our cap for the Oxbow project. Okay. So the first thing we want to talk about tonight is the East State Street Quarter Safety Improvements. The police chief, the EPW director, and our project and development manager, Ann Paula, did you attend that as well?
I did not.
Okay, those three attended with ODOT folks out of Marietta and Central in Columbus. And they discussed the And they discussed the, we discussed this over the last six months or so, what we're looking to do to improve our state street, especially starting, it begins at, just so everyone remembers, it begins at Home Street and goes to Charles Street. That's the main interchange improvements, but we've also expanded beyond Charles a bit to try to really improve our restrictions on left-hand turns for safety improvements. So there will be a learning curve for many on this proposal and it's, as we all know, there was the public forums that occurred at the community center. And the ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, is looking at moving forward with this project with us. And we will be asking for 2.6 million to do these improvements with a timeline of construction of 2016 through 2017, roughly. I think we know that sometimes construction takes longer than we would like, especially in our bidding process, right? So that is going on. Service safety director?
That's correct. We also want to incorporate more on our own costs would be the sidewalk that's so needed on the southern side of East State Street. In addition, we've already had $2 million awarded for us for small cities for this project. What we're trying to do is to get all the awards and fiscal years to come to an agreement.
And as we've talked about with these projects and finance understands this, getting all these things to overlap so they meet all the criteria from all the different entities, being federal, being state, wherever it's coming from, they all have to mesh in. And that is a coordination problem in itself. So they are working on it.
Challenge.
Challenge, correct. Okay, any questions on that? So we'll be moving that forward. I don't know, is there anything on our website that talks about that? Not yet. We have the other plans from before. I don't know if we want to put anything, I mean, I'm looking at something that you provided in terms of.
I think we could probably put that up. I want to check with Andy. I know not to, you know, to say, yes, this is the approved design.
I think it is quite, quite a good explanation in terms of helping people understand what the scope of the project is. It talks about, you know, the reducing the conflict points, which are really important in, in traffic situations. Okay, the next item is that I'm going to talk about is West Union. As many of you know, we've been moving forward with the West Union. It was a great parade on Saturday because we were all commenting, those of us who walked, what a nice smooth surface it was. And it looked really nice. And the band and everybody seemed to navigate around that roundabout without any problems. I noticed some, some of the news organizations took some pictures of that, which I thought was great. So I just want to real quickly, over the course of this week and next, they're going to be finishing up the project down there, raising some manholes. There has been a press release put out about this, but they are working on manholes. They are also going to finish up, if you notice at the top, there were still some sidewalks and curving that needed to be completed. They'll do the pavement markings. There will be some closures near Factory and Depot Street. There'll be some reinstallation of meters or different movement around with meters. Depot Street, next week, I would say most, a lot of next week Depot Street is going to be in a state of construction and there'll be closure. So people just need to remember that because I know a lot of people go to OU to work and they go in along Depot and Factory. So just so people know that, there was a press release put out. And then we will be working on that island area there at Depot and Union. There's different names for that, but we're calling it a, an island or some people call it a pork chop. There's different ways that, that deal with the left-hand turns and that kind of thing. So there'll be some restriction of turning there in the future. And after Halloween, they'll deal with the stream restoration and the biofiltration boxes. The other thing that's going on, and I think we have a picture that can go up on the screen here, if, there we go. So the city just recently was able to put together this design. This is from the ridges and one of the metal pieces up at the ridges. This follows with our Essence of Athens plan. This is a template and we will be incorporating that into the final pavement markings down around the roundabout, the new, what we call the mini roundabout on West Union. And Paula, you may want to tell us exactly where they're going to put that.
The crosswalks.
In the crosswalk.
Just like the, in the Essence of Athens plan that they saw. So this is our first test case. We're actually really thrilled about this. And we actually purchased the templates, we'll be able to use it as we redo Court Street in the future and other places.
So that is the design that was picked and that is, I don't know which row, if you notice at the ridges, each level of the building actually has a different design on the metal grate. And I don't know where that design is in the building, if it's what floor, but each floor has a different design.
I think Semper Reisner has it.
Dare it's on your head, Member Reisner. Yes.
I have a question. I'm slow tonight and my reflexes on this. It's back to the East State Street corridor study.
Yes, yes.
So that's working towards design and engineering details for East State specifically. And my question is that at the time that Department of Transportation came in, were they also were looking at Route 50? Is that exits onto Route 33 or that's all part of another project that we'll be looking at later?
They, they pulled it out in terms of, this is where they were able to get funding for. So there is a future for Stimson and the weaving in 50 and all that. But that was, you know, they had to kind of say, even though we've been looking at it, and we still are looking at that entire corridor, this one can get funded.
Okay. So they're looking at, that also came out of the Federal Highway Safety Study, which we were a part of, that particular interchange. And obviously not meeting the demands on that interchange in terms of traffic flow. As we all know, what, 27,000 cars or something are, go back and forth on East State every day or whatever in the high times. So, and I remember being at those meetings with the ODOT folks and they said that that's because there's so much going on there, that would be then the next project. But they designed this with the idea of moving into the next phase.
Okay.
So it's not like it's a separate design. This, this is a design that will work into the Stimson 50 spaghetti bowl there.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that answer it?
That did?
All right. So we've covered West Union. The other thing that we need to discuss real quick is, starting around October 27th, you're going to start seeing the earth moving at the Armitage Bike Spur. This is the bike extension that occurs there on the other side of West State Street Park after it goes up and over the Hocking River and then will eventually connect with University Estates. So everything is pretty well in shape with the wetland project there and any kind of utility issues. And so they are going to be starting earthwork and we're doing that in-house. Okay, sidewalk improvements. So usually when we take a length of sidewalk, we've done that as part of a street project. At council for the last year or so, we've, and we've talked about the need for, there are certain sidewalks in town where the street doesn't necessarily need repair, but the sidewalks do. And so our street director, EPW director Andy Stone, has been looking at different ways to do this. So he's identified three streets in town that need significant sidewalk improvements. And all of these streets also have what we call tree lawns, that grass strip between the trees and, or the street and the sidewalk. And we will begin to actually put money into a side, where we're looking at how to assess and put money into a sidewalk fund for sidewalk improvements. And so what I'm asking council to be mindful of at this point is the whole budgeting that we're going to start looking at how to put money away to do these projects. Now Andy has identified three streets and he's picked them from three different parts of town. So he's identified Central, North Congress and South May. He has three areas that he wants to look at moving forward with, with this sidewalk improvement project.
Essentially having these, these generic set of plans ready and on a shelf to be able to issue. And you've asked for, we've heard you loud and clearly when you looked at a six-year capital improvement plan, that you want to fund sidewalks on an annual basis. This would still assess it back to the property owner, but it'd be a methodology in which we could put $50,000 a year into improving sidewalks. So, so hopefully we'll have something come before that's vetted through the law office that we're able to proceed, like you say, for 2015.
2015, I didn't mention the year, thank you. 2015, we'd like to see this happen.
We've heard you loud and clear.
Did I say that? Yes.
Could you say again, which Congress is it?
So Central, North Congress. And I'm not sure when you say North Congress, if you're talking about, I would hope you're talking about from Washington up or Carpenter up or, so that's something because though that particular two-block period from Washington to Carpenter is also in pretty needed repair. And it's also very heavily walked on a daily basis. So I'm not sure how much of that stretch he was talking about.
Essentially, the idea was to take what occurs all over the city so that we have, we can pull Plan Set A, Plan Set B, Plan Set C that would mirror the existing conditions on the sidewalk that needs repairing.
And is the, is the thought that the city would then take the initiative, replace the sidewalks and then the homeowner would be?
They assess the homeowner and then we would also have that assessment board if we needed to, as we followed with the other projects?
The first step I would feel would be to issue notice to the homeowner, allowing them to repair it by themselves. But if we have this in place, then we could also say, they may get a better deal, which is what we found, I shouldn't use the terms like deal and governance, but you know, the cost might be less because of bidding out bulk.
Because you're bundling.
Great, great to see this moving forward. You know, building on the inventory, it's building on data, it's setting aside some of the resources and it's what makes it a pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly community, so.
Right. Member Patterson?
Yeah, I want to echo that and I want to echo from the voice of the Commission on Disabilities because it's something that's been high on the agenda within the commission. We've had many, many conversations over the various city streets. I know South May is, it was a hot topic for the Commission on Disabilities, but, but a lot of the sidewalks are, a lot of our sidewalks are in great shape, but there are a few that I think do need some attention. Brick sidewalks should be on that list someday as well, I believe, because those are tough to maintain as well. Anyway, I'm happy to see this moving forward.
Okay, the only other thing I would say is hang in there Richland travelers, Richland Avenue travelers, they're continuing the patching to get us through the winter so that they can complete that project next year during warmer weather, as the contractor deems appropriate. So the city is continuing with the patching effort. And then I have one final announcement, just an announcement, a general announcement. Tomorrow evening, the League of Women Voters of Athens County will hold a forum featuring the candidates for the Ohio House of Representatives District 94. Yoland Dennis and Debbie Phillips will be debating. This is at the Athens Public Library, 6:30 to 8:00, and certainly the public is definitely invited.
If I could, just for a second, I'd like to go back to that Oxbow Bridge Design Award. That's a state-level award. I want to kind of give it more props than, than were given. It's a prestigious award. There's not a lot of cities and elements in the different cities in Ohio that have received this. So this really speaks well to not only the, the design team, the contractor that did a lot of the heavy lifting, but also, again, Andy Stone, our engineer here in the city. So, and his staff, Jessica Dine and a lot of people that spent many, many hours working on this. So again, this is a pre-procedural award and I just want the public to understand that.
And again, if the public has not been underneath the bridge to look at the incredible artwork in the.
Reliefs.
The reliefs that are underneath each, each abutment. And it just really speaks to the history of this community. You know, the train, the train one is really impressive, I think. They're both impressive, but it's really some wonderful artwork down there.
And to repair the, the abutments on the side of the bridge that were held on to, I remember when the designs were going on, I was thinking, I'm going to cut those and throw them away. And I'm so glad to see that those were held on to from a historical standpoint. You travel the United States and you'll see a lot of EPW projects that have taken place back in, you know, pre-World War II, during the Depression era. And you go along the Oregon coast, as a matter of fact, it's this exact same design.
Beautiful.
And it's beautiful that we've been able to hang on to those and keep those.
Right. And I know that the staff, the city staff really sweated that out because they were worried as they removed them. They literally had to lift them up and move them out of the way, get the bridge repairs done. So, yeah, thank you.
Hey, congratulations on the city getting another one.
Thank you. Transportation is done. So is the meeting over?
Meeting's over.
The meeting's adjourned.